The City Council has just returned from an open session, from an executive session, and we're returning back to our open session here in the Assembly Room. We're on to item number three in adjournment. Could I get a motion, please?
Still moved. Second.
Moved by Alter, seconded by Weiner. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned. And we are adjourned into our work session for the City of Iowa City on March 22nd, 2022. And this is going to be, it's just around 4:26. And the first item is the Forest View relocation proposal. And I'm going to ask that our City Manager Jeff Ruin lead us in this conversation.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I have slides to get through, about 10 slides this afternoon, but I really want to direct your attention and the public's attention to the more detailed memo that's in the packet. Obviously, we can only kind of put some summary bullet points up on these slides. As you know, this is an incredibly complex issue, and the memo will do a better job of providing the needed background and context on everything we're going to discuss. So, a little bit of background, back in September of last year, we presented some staff recommendations for priorities in the use of American Rescue Plan Act funds. And the Forest View relocation was mentioned as one of the emergent priorities during that discussion. Since that time, we've had the good fortune to meet with the tenants a couple of times to better understand some of the challenges that they have and better understand from their perspective what the issues are in their neighborhood. And have had a really good back-and-forth dialogue with the tenants. And I want to just take a moment to thank them and the staff at the Center for Worker Justice and the board there for facilitating those meetings. We're still not probably in 100% agreement on what this relocation recommendation looks like. I can tell you, the feedback they provided was very meaningful and did help us understand things a little bit better. And some of that feedback is incorporated into the final memo that you saw. So, the memo goes into detail on the redevelopment project itself. We've been talking about the redevelopment of the Forest View area, which I will say, when I say that, I mean more than just the manufactured housing park, but the larger 73-acre parcel of ground out there, all the way back to 2015. So, it has an extensive history, and some of those summaries are up there. But again, I'd reference, I'd have you reference the memo if you want to learn a little bit more about that project history. The important thing to note, that is, in 2019, the Council did approve a conditional zoning agreement for the site. And basically, what a conditional zoning agreement says is, before a building permit can be obtained, these conditions have to be met. So, it was a very project-specific type of document. And I want to go through some of those bullet points with you, so you understand, back in 2019, what the expectations were, the shared expectations were from the tenants, the developer, the city, and the larger community. As you know, there was a plan to build approximately 57 new modular homes in a neighborhood. And the conditional zoning agreement outlined conditions related to the design of those homes, and actually provided the pathway for residents to transition from the existing manufactured housing park into this new Forest View neighborhood with the ability to build equity, starting at the current lot rate lease that they were paying, so that they would kind of transition into these new homes under the same rent structure. And then those rents would gradually increase, during which time they would build equity and eventually have the opportunity to purchase the home, if that was a goal of theirs. The conditional zoning agreement anticipated three different types of replacement housing, the first being what I just described, this new Forest View neighborhood with 57 modular housing units. At the time, in 2019, there were far more than 57 mobile home units in existence. So, there was also alternatives outside of the 57 planned homes, and that was multifamily property on that same redevelopment site. And then also off-site assistance. So, if a resident did not, or saw a better opportunity somewhere outside of that Forest View redevelopment area, they would have had the ability to obtain 7,200 per household to assist with that relocation. Certainly, the conditional zoning agreement was a lot more detailed than what I just described, but that's the basic expectations. The conditional zoning agreement also required the execution of an affordable housing agreement. So, those general terms that I just described were just that, they were very general. Certainly, when you're getting into the issue, you can anticipate a lot of details that had to be worked out to figure exactly how folks would transition, how they would elect to what of the three housing choices they preferred. And that was a condition of the conditional zoning agreement, was to execute an affordable housing agreement that you all would have approved prior to getting that building permit. That was one of those issues. Those conversations stalled back in late 2019. We really weren't getting anything from the owners that would suggest they were moving forward on the development of that affordable housing agreement. So, that was never executed. Also, there lacked a traffic study that was required, and there was still some plating that needed to be done as well. So, they still had several steps they had to go before they could have pulled that I think we all know now, and it's a disappointing realization, but the realization is the project's not moving forward. And since 2019, we've seen a great reduction in the number of households actually living in the Forest View neighborhood. We estimated at the time of the conditional zoning agreement, there were maybe 90 to 100 units. Last estimate that I had received from the tenants out there now is that it's probably between 50 and 60 right now. So, a very sharp decline in the number of units out there. We've seen, I'd say accelerated deterioration of the area. I think everybody anticipated that this redevelopment project would happen. The owners were investing a lot of money into plans, so everybody felt this was going to move forward. As such, the upkeep of the common areas of the private infrastructure have not occurred. And of course, from a resident's standpoint, you're going to be hesitant to put money into your home, knowing that it's a, it could be a very short-term, specifically a matter of months, type of a living arrangement. So, we've seen kind of that dual disinvestment. Nobody's investing in those individual units, the owners aren't investing in the park, and as a result, you're seeing accelerated deterioration there. There's been some generous community partners to step up and try to help winterize units the last two seasons. The city has sponsored those efforts financially. In 2020, it was the Iowa City Federation of Labor and the Center for Worker Justice. And then this year, we're working with Habitat for Humanity on this, I should say, on this past winter. Clearly, that's not a sustainable solution. You know, that's a true Band-Aid approach, and we can't continue to do that. Frankly, a lot of the units out there are well beyond that kind of temporary solution. So, there's a couple of, we wanted to make sure you are aware of some history that the city's had with relocation efforts. We don't have a whole lot of history, but we do have some recent history that could give you a kind of some guideposts, if you will. In 2016, there was sudden displacement in what was known as the Rose Oaks Housing Development, that's now known as the Quarters. And after a lot of council consideration, the City Council at the time authorized one-time payments of $250 to each household that had a valid lease at the time of that displacement. Total in-city investment was around $34,000. And then in addition, we also funded some translation services and contracted with Shelter House for some case management. A couple of years later, during a rezoning on Prairie de Sheen Road, we had the Hawkeye Trailer Court relocation. And as part of that rezoning, the City Council stipulated that there'd be a $4,000 relocation payment for those residents that were living in that mobile home park. And that cost was split between the developer and the city at $2,000 each, for a total of four. And then there was also some case management assistance that the city paid for and was provided by the Shelter House. So, those are the two recent examples where the city directly got involved. Another one that is detailed in the memo is the Federal Relocation, I'm sorry, the Federal Uniform Relocation Act, often referred to as URA. That provides a methodology for relocation that I think is important for you to understand. It would apply if there were federal dollars, if it was a federal project that was causing the displacement, or if the city received federal dollars and were doing something that caused the displacement. This is the law that would govern that situation. That is not the case here. We are looking at a strictly voluntary situation. The city does not have a legal requirement to step in with relocation here. But nonetheless, we can look at the URA as a potential model to use. That's detailed in the memo, if you want to see kind of specifics on how that works. But the basic logic is, you take what the current rents are, you look at what a comparable unit would be, or whatever leased unit the resident has secured. You take that gap, you multiply that by 42 months, and that's the assistance. Except that the assistance is capped at 7,200. So, that's the max assistance that you would get under the federal URA. And that number should sound familiar, because that was the number that was contained in the conditional zoning agreement for those homes that may potentially move off-site. Again, so that conditional zoning agreement said, if you're going to seek housing outside of the Forest View area, your assistance will be 7,200, borrowed directly from this federal legislation. Again, you have the flexibility, if you choose to move forward with the relocation program, to craft things any number of ways, depending on how you do that. We may have to look at different funding sources or modify things a little bit, but because this is voluntary, you do have the ability to be creative in how you pursue this. So, some key issues that you all will have to discuss, and staff is here to kind of help you walk through that. Number one is the amount of assistance. What is going to be a meaningful amount of assistance that will truly help residents move into safer housing? The funding source that we're going to use, we certainly would like to maximize use of the American Rescue Plan Act dollars that we've received. And depending on the program parameters that you set, we may have to find supplemental sources if needed. Eligibility is a big question. Who's eligible for this? Is it everybody living there now? Is it folks that were living there back in 2019? How big is that pool of eligible residents is something we'll have to discuss. The relocation timeframe, how long can, will you provide for someone to relocate? Currently, right now, the owners would have the ability to close the park in 60 days. That assumes that there are no leases. As far as we know, they're all month-to-month leases, or there may not be actually written leases at all. So, that would be a 60-day timeframe. The federal URA allows, provides a 90-day timeframe. So, we'll have to discuss, do you want to use, you want to look at that URA standard, or you'll see staff's recommendation is that more time is needed than 90 days to give people a better opportunity to explore all options. And then finally, we want to talk about any future affordable housing that may occur. Obviously, we do hope that at some point, development is on this, is realized on this site. And we know the expectation will be that there'll be significant affordable housing when that development comes forward. And we want to talk about, you know, what right, if any, residents currently in Forest View might have to some of those housing opportunities in the future. Okay. So, I'm going to walk you through staff's relocation proposal. I know it's a bit of a broken record, but please refer to the memo for some of the details. The summary points are right here. Staff is proposing that the eligibility date back to September 1 of 2021, so last fall. September is the month in which we presented our ARPA recommendations to you, and at which time, the concept of forestry relocation was floated. We do believe that the least intrusive path forward and the most effective path forward is for, excuse me, income verification, and the dollar amount in the American Rescue Plan Act is $40,626. So, if a household made more than that amount, they would not be eligible, unless they may be eligible for other federal assistance programs. So, there's a whole list of federal assistance programs, whether it's food support, insurance support, things like that, that someone may be eligible for, even if they're not enrolled in that program. We can check to see if they're eligible despite having a higher income, and that could still make them eligible for this relocation program. We believe, actually encouraged by the Treasury, is self-certification of income. So, we think we can develop a very simple process for residents to self-certify their income. And we will have to prove residency, but we would look to do that in a simple, straightforward manner. The staff, we are proposing relocation assistance, including a moving allowance of $15,750. We utilized the Federal Uniform Relocation Act methodology, but we essentially lifted that cap. That cap of 7,200, we didn't feel was realistic to use in this situation, where you have probably some of the lowest rents in Iowa City. It's our understanding that the lot rents remain at $310. That is very low compared to what other housing opportunities would provide in our market. So, we felt like we needed to bump that up. And you can see, we've almost doubled what that cap is, and our recommendation is $15,750. You can see the calculation actually in the memo. Based on some feedback from the tenants, we would think it's reasonable to provide some of that money upfront, so that could be used for any number of things. Could be security deposits, could be first-month rent, anything, moving expenses that may need to be paid before actual move-out date. And then the balance, or 75%, would be paid upon move-out. And we are looking or recommending to you a December 9th move-out deadline for this, really looking ahead to that winter and trying to get as many people out by December 9th as possible. Again, it's important that I just reiterate this a couple of times, the city cannot force anybody to move. The owner certainly could at some point, but the city does not have standing to force somebody. So, this would be a voluntary program. And there is clearly a risk that even if we looked at this December 9th move-out deadline, that the owners could choose, the owner could choose to close the park earlier. I don't anticipate that that would be the issue, but we have to think, we have to know that that scenario could be out there. Certainly, we know that there's a lot of troubles with private infrastructure. You could have a major infrastructure failure out there that would perhaps move folks in that direction. So, that's a summary of the staff relocation proposal. Obviously, there's a lot of details that need to be discussed with this, but hopefully that gives you good indication of where staff is. Regarding the future affordable housing on-site, we are trying to do everything we can as staff to ensure that whatever comes of Forest View in the future, and that's likely with a new ownership group, but we don't know that for sure, includes significant affordable housing. We don't want to lose sight that that was a kind of key cornerstone of the redevelopment proposal. A lot of the density that was approved back in 2019 was done so because the city knew that we were also getting significant investment in affordable housing. So, we want to work with the current owner or future owners on making sure that that affordable housing commitment is honored in whatever proposals come forward. There's kind of two different scenarios we're going down. One might be a land dedication from the current owners. If we can get the current owners to dedicate the land that was going to be the new Forest View neighborhood, then the city could control that, could control the future of that. We would have the ability to develop affordable housing in a way that we thought was most effective and most beneficial for the community. Obviously, we cannot compel the owners to do that, but they are open to those discussions. And I fully expect that we'll continue to discuss that option with them. If they decide that, you know, the best thing for them is to sell to a new owner, then we would lean on that 2019 conditional zoning agreement and talk with any new owners and say, this is the next expectation of the community. We realize that the market has changed, and this exact proposal is not viable in this day and age. But with whatever you put forward, we expect a similar affordable housing commitment will be reflected in that future proposal. And I think, you know, we would certainly do our best to realize that with whatever ownership group came forward on this property in the future. I do have reservations of making commitments to the Forest View residents about their ability to transition into that future affordable housing, if and when it happens. One is because I think it's really important that the residents make their housing decisions now without that potential out there. I'd hate for them to make decisions thinking, again, that there could be a housing option for me in another year, or two, or three at this site. Frankly, they've been given a lot of hope over the last five or six years, and it hasn't materialized. And that's, you know, I'm not pointing fingers or anything like that. These issues are, developments like this are incredibly complex, and it's not uncommon that very complex projects don't move forward. But the reality is, they've had a lot of hope. And I don't feel like we have the ability today, here, to extend that hope. I do think the Council can say, when that time comes, when we know what that affordable housing situation looks like, and we know what funding sources might be there, we know whether we own it or we don't, that we can explore that opportunity. But I think you need to be really careful about making guarantees or promises on first right of refusal. You could end up making achievement of that affordable housing a lot more difficult, because it could eliminate some funding sources or otherwise constrain different options that otherwise might be beneficial for the community. So, to wrap up, you know, this is one of those examples where just because something is approved, you know, a rezoning is approved by council, the project doesn't always move forward. And as I just said, oftentimes, the more complex the project is, the tougher it is to actually get the financing and move things forward. And unfortunately, you know, it's led to a disappointing situation here, where a vision that was unanimously supported by a council was largely supported by the community, the tenants, and the owner, just wasn't able to get to the finish line. The existing CZA, you know, I can anticipate folks just saying, well, you've got the CZA, just use that, just kind of force anybody into that development proposal. The reality is that that is not likely viable. That had a lot of commercial space, it had hospitality space, and the markets have changed drastically. If you were to take a hard line and just say, that CZA is it, and that's what we're going to lean on for the foreseeable future, you just have to realize you're not going to see development. And that park will eventually close, and that will sit vacant. And there's challenges that that provides, not only with the current residents, but as you know, a major component of this project was flood resiliency for Iowa City and getting that secondary access from the Peninsula neighborhood. So, I think there is an interest for the city to want to see development move forward there, but we're going to have to expect it's going to be a few years. Just as this Forest View project started in 2015 and didn't get the last rezoning it needed to 2019, you could see another project come forward that takes an equal amount of time to get through. Hopefully not, but we have to expect that that's a possibility. So, in the memo, I left you with a couple of concluding questions there. These are guidelines for you. I think this is some of the things that staff identified that would be really helpful for you to talk about. You don't have to follow these questions, you can carry your discussions how you best see fit, but maybe refer to those to make sure we're covering these areas. Anything you decide to do will be memorialized in a formal resolution at a later date. So, certainly, any guidance you can give today is helpful, but understand, you're not making any final decisions today. That vote will come down the road. And if you need multiple work sessions, you know, you can certainly schedule those. This is a tough issue to tackle in one night. So, with that, I'll just, I'm going to take my seat. I can still answer questions, but I'll turn the discussion over to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Jeff, for taking us through a lot of information right now. And I do want to welcome everyone that is here present and that's present in this building today. Council, I just opened it up to us to just kind of engage in conversation. And I will also just reiterate, we certainly can go anywhere with the discussion, but I think some of the key things that we can start to discuss is the amount of assistance, the funding source, the eligibility timeframe to move, as well as the future affordability on this property, or the future housing, affordable housing on this property.
If I can just leap in, if I can just leap in, I think that in many ways, discussing eligibility is a good first move, because then that leads kind of into then us being able to talk about sort of the amounts. I'm open to other suggestions, but it seems, at least in that kind of sequence, that there's a certain logic to it. And I guess with that also, I'll just put my first foot forward and say that, pretty simply, I honestly believe that while the city is grappling with a lot of different parts to this and money as well, I ultimately think that we need to honor the original agreement that was entered into in 2019, in terms of the original tenants who entered into and fostered this agreement.
I will get to my opinion on some of those questions that you posed in our memo, but I had a few things that I wanted to say. I have to admit, since I've been there since day one, it's been, it's been very disheartening for me to see that the residents of Forest View have had to live through yet another winter in that mobile home court. And I want to thank the Carpenters Union, the Teamsters, Habitat for Humanity, and the many others for their efforts to provide some of the needed repairs. But these, as we know, were only temporary fixes and not really viable long-term solutions. I also want to say that, and for those of you out there who are listening in, I admire each and every one of these residents and their families for the strength and courage that they have shown through this very long process. I can't believe that it's taken this many years, and we're still back to square one, basically. On page seven of the memorandum in our packet, it stated that there is no legal obligation to pursue a relocation package. However, in staff's view, such action is prudent. And if by prudent, you mean wise and sensible. And if by prudent you mean wise and sensible, I agree. We need to treat this as a matter of extreme urgency. These individuals should not have to continue to wait for what was promised to them. They should not have to worry about the possibility of going through yet another winter in their current homes or their infrastructure collapsing. We, as a city, need to show some integrity and do what we can to help fulfill what was promised to these individuals. They need financial help for whatever it would take to relocate to a safe and affordable home. And they should not have to jump through a number of hoops to receive it. The question of eligibility has come up about those persons who moved from the court after the CZA was signed and before the September of last year date. My belief is that they should still qualify to receive at least some compensation for having to have had to leave their home. For all we know, their homes were just not livable, and they had to leave as soon as possible. They should not be penalized for that. We just need to do the right thing as a city for each and every person that has been struggling through this. That's all.
I guess I just have a preliminary contextual kind of framing comment, which is, regardless of where this conversation goes tonight, because there are so many interdependent and complicated issues, in my mind, I just want to acknowledge and celebrate the fact that we're here talking about a collaboration between the city, led by our staff and those tenants, those residents, who have worked so hard and so long, and who came with a joint application with the property developer when, at the time that the conditional zoning agreement was entered. So wherever we land tonight, I think we should acknowledge and celebrate the fact that we're talking about significant investment from the city to honor something that was not our responsibility to do right by those who worked so hard to try and have a path forward for affordable housing when their houses were deteriorating. So again, I'm not going to take a position on a particular thing at this stage. I want to kind of hear how the conversation goes, but I do just want to make sure we're framing it that way, as I know we're going to nitpick a million things going forward.
Also wanted to acknowledge alongside with you about the tenant association and the city, how collaboratively they, the tenant association expressed that they've been working with the city yesterday. Counselor Taylor and Counselor Harmson and I, was it yesterday?
Sunday.
Sunday, okay. Sunday, we were over at Forest View, and we actually had the opportunity to walk through the neighborhood, as well as talk to some of the tenants that were present. And they gave the city an award, which we accepted on behalf of the city. And what they really said was, thank you for listening and working with us. And I think that's a great testament to the collaborative efforts that the tenant association has been having. And so as for me, since I am talking now, I'll tell you that it was, it is humbling, you know, to walk and see the need to be in a more livable environment. But it was also great to see the hope that was expressed by everyone there. The community spirit was very evident in so many ways, even through the good food that was present and all that good stuff. But as I think back to this, and I was a new counselor here in 2018 when this came before me, and it was all new, but I remember the council room being filled with residents. And they came and they made their case to us. And just like Counselor Burgess just mentioned, they were successful in being co-signers with the developers. And that was such a great feeling and so much excitement. But that soon, you know, has kind of been dimmed. Fifty-seven new mobile home modular homes is what was expected. Everyone was excited to have the opportunity to lease, to own the properties. And, you know, that now is definitely faded away. You know, I do need to be, reiterate and reiterate and reiterate that the city don't have a legal obligation. But I also want to iterate and iterate that we, I personally feel, and I can tell you that my colleagues do as well, feel morally that we do care for each other, and we want to have a discussion. And we may not always see eye to eye and agree to things 100%, but I believe that we can, as a council and as residents, find a way to move forward in unity. And so as I am, you know, thinking about this, I'll tell you that I do have some thoughts and some position statements that I think I'm comfortable kind of sharing at this point. Eligibility, I think, is, you know, a good starting point. You know, who is eligible? I don't know, at least for me, that we need to get into how much money individuals make out there personally. And so the, for me, I think we take that off the table personally. If someone was out there, I'm okay with September 1st last fall for various reasons. And someone can correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding was the relocation plan, when it was 7,200, at the time that the agreement was created, it was for anyone that had it to move once the plans moved forward. I don't recall it having been for past attendees or residents of the community. So as a baseline, there's still room for negotiation and conversation. I'm comfortable with the September 1st. That's when we started to have the discussions of our, you know, with our ARPA funds and that type of stuff. As far as timeframe to move, I think that that can certainly be a moving target. We don't know where the developer is as far as the timeframe. I don't know that the tenant association has officially heard when the park will close. So I think that can certainly be a moving target. What I do know is, you know, the need to move for many is very vital. So if I don't focus in on the timeframe, I think focusing on the amount of assistance and when it's available becomes more important than the timeframe. And so as a baseline, the 15,750,000 is what the city staff has laid out for council to consider. And it's not a, you know, a final place, but I do, I saw how it was all laid out as to how they came up with that figure. The 7,200 was the original amount with the relocation plan. And so the 15,750, I am comfortable with. The funding source, I certainly think that we have the opportunity to use ARPA funds, and I would support that. When it does come down to the future of the affordable housing on the property, I think there are so many factors that go into what's going to happen. Will the developer actually give the property to the city? Will the developer keep it himself, or keep it themselves? Will they sell it off? It does have that affordability, you know, catch on it. And so, you know, I think that's where the council does have some latitude when a project come before us, where that affordable piece is certainly there. I think the part about ensuring that the current residents of Forest View neighborhood have first op. As much as I would love that idea and love to make that stipulation, I sit here with the reality that the tenants have been so courageous and all of their efforts to date, that I don't want to be in a position where, because we don't know when this will be here. There could be a totally new council when this project come up. And so I don't want to set up the hopes to a degree where it is totally dim. So for me, I think the future of the affordable housing, you know, who will be there? I'm not comfortable at this point saying that it would be for the Forest View residents as first right to refusal. But with that being said, I do think that the affordable rates are going to be very important. And whichever council is here during that time will have to really key in and be zoned in to really respect all the hard work that the Forest View tenant association has laid, the foundation that they laid. I think it's going to be a great opportunity for this council to have outstanding ground from the start. And so even though right now in this moment, I am not supporting that, I do believe that the hard work of the tenant association gives the council a good baseline moving forward with whatever project comes before us. So for me, I know that this isn't us voting on anything, but I wanted to get out my thoughts so that my fellow counselors can hear. I do see some of our Forest View Tenant Association members here. And again, I so appreciate all that you all have done and will continue to do.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll go ahead and, somebody wants to jump in first? First of all, I wanted to say thank you and echo some of the things that the council member, Taylor has said, and Alter, and Burgess, and Mayor Teague, about thanking the people that have worked so hard for so long to try and make Iowa City a better place, you know, in general, as well as for the residents of Forest View, members of the community, members of the Forest View, the previous and current council members and city staff, all have worked well. It is nice to be in a position where we are here fine-tuning how we're going to help people and not arguing whether or not we should be doing that. We've answered that question. I've lived in a lot of places and covered a lot of city councils, and I would be willing to say that it would be a very different discussion in a lot of places I've lived before. Kind of going through and kind of running through the list, I think I'll just kind of follow the mayor's lead. I agree, taking the income off the table, it makes sense. I think when we talk about who qualifies, figuring out a way not to go through all of those steps. If we can streamline it, it'll make it, you know, hopefully simpler for city staff. But also, you know, let's face it, if you're raising a family and your household income is $41,000, you're not rolling in it, you know? And to kind of split those hairs just seems kind of cruel to me. So I agree with that. I actually think we should, we can cover back further. I kind of agree with Councilman Taylor, and I think Alter maybe said this as well. Going back to the original date. I know I was looking at it, and I don't know if anybody else, this was shared with anybody else, I don't know, but a letter even from our previous attorney, a letter that was actually to the original developer, which basically indicated that this should go back to the date the CZA was instituted, was passed. In terms of, it was actually a question similar to this. Who would get that 72,000, sorry, 7,200? Got to remember where to put that decimal point. Moving relocation. So even though we're talking about a different amount now, I think there's some precedent for even the city's involvement looking at that as an important date to fix on. And so, you know, I would certainly be supportive of the idea of let's look how we can get that back and what ways and what mechanisms or combinations of funding sources. We have to do a different funding source for anybody who moved, say, pre-COVID. You know, maybe that's something that has to be done. And so that would be something that I would support, looking into that. You know, using the ARPA funds and looking back further than September, because we do see that that, you know, and that certainly since COVID has started, that neighborhood has been impacted in a way that has been sort of like this microcosm of society, but all of it located, like everybody there was affected. It wasn't a part of the neighborhood. It was the entire neighborhood that was impacted. And so the argument about looking at the neighborhood as a whole, as sort of a package, makes sense to me. I think that's arguable, supportive. In terms of the amount, I think if the, we'll hear later, I'm sure we'll hear from some members, and we've heard from some members of the Residence Association. But for those kinds of details, if they're comfortable with it, I'm certainly comfortable with that. You know, in terms of the split 25 upfront to help them with moving expenses and the rest after the move, I think that sounds like something that's been negotiated, and I'm supportive of that. Again, what I like about this is a lot of these issues have already been worked through with city staff and the residents and their allies. And so that's good. So we're not just making stuff up. We're actually doing this as part of an ongoing collaborative process. This is just the part in front of the cameras. And so, yeah, so I think all of those things. When we get into the issues of the future of the development, you know, I don't know that that's as pressing of an issue tonight, because I think we really, in my mind, the first issue is to make sure the people that need to get into safer housing get that funding and know they can do that. Or if they have had to relocate, but they're struggling to get by, that we get them that help too. And so we kind of get them, everybody that has been impacted from Forest View onto solid ground. So to me, that's the priority. Looking ahead to the future development, maybe, you know, I would love to be able to give the same guarantees that they've had all along, if for some reason we think we can't do that. And I'm not convinced that we can't. But if we think that, perhaps we can do something like guaranteeing a seat at the table. So if decisions are made that we're not, you know, that they're being made with the same people who are going to be most directly impacted and have been most directly impacted since day one. So that's kind of my starting point on some of those. And of course, like I said, you know, we'll be getting the benefit of some more input here, I'm sure, at the beginning of our next meeting. So that's kind of where I'm at.
Well, I certainly am sympathetic to what everyone has said. You know, I was on council when this project first was being considered, and it was a visionary project. I mean, I think we all felt that this was something that Iowa City would be not only proud of, but could very well be a project that would be, have interests beyond Iowa City as a model of how to develop land with the challenge of incorporating into that development affordable housing. It was a really significant achievement. So I feel we need to salvage that vision. I mean, that is critical, that we don't lose that sense of vision. You know, and how that influences, you know, this question of the, you know, the providing assistance in the short term. I think it seems clear to me that, you know, that we should make, everyone who sign the CZA should be eligible. It should go back to that agreement. You know, I think there is a question as to what the level of payment would be for those, you know, if we go back to the beginning. Certainly, the 7,200 would be the baseline, since that was the figure in the agreement. It does seem to me, one of the critical points in terms of the ARPA funding is when the impacts of COVID came into play, which seemed, my sense of how that would translate to the calendar would be perhaps March of 2020. I mean, that's when the impacts began to hit. And so I would think that that, again, this is maybe something that requires further investigation and discussion. But it seems that that may be a worthwhile date to determine how the funding amounts are determined. So that's, you know, one thing to consider there. On the question of, you know, the big picture, looking forward over into the long term, I mean, this is an interesting, you know, getting back to the vision. The crux of this project, I felt in some ways, at least in terms of the community's interest, was over the affordable housing element. But I think there are other things that are, make the project of interest and importance to us. But I think there are other things that are, make the project of interest and importance to Iowa City. One is the, you know, the flooding issue. Foster Road is, as it stands now, cut off should flood levels rise to a point where Foster Road at the low point is flooded. It also has an important environmental element. There's a lot of natural area on this site. So when I combine all three of those things, the thought of the city perhaps considering purchasing the property comes to mind, because do we want to put the fate of this piece of land in the hands of a private developer? You know, a lot of these questions that we're talking about seem to revolve around, you know, how much control we have over the outcome, if that were the case. So I would at least be interested in considering that. You know, the peninsula development just down the road was a city project. It was a city-sponsored process, we developed the vision for it. We put out an RFP, and, you know, we can now see the results. I think it's one of the more interesting and successful residential neighborhoods in Iowa City. So we do have evidence that that approach can be successful, and that's the approach that was taken in that instance. So that's a possibility. Otherwise, we need to make sure that affordable housing is a priority, and whatever happens there. I don't doubt that the original design would not have been approved by council if there hadn't been the affordable housing element. So that is essential to anything moving forward on this site. I think those are probably my main comments for now, and I'll leave it there.
I have a number of questions based on this. I think a lot of them will be for staff, but also maybe for some of the counselors who are here in the past. So the 2019 conditional zoning agreement was signed between the city and the developer. And I hear you, Jeff, that it wouldn't be probably viable today, but we're not going to preemptively remove that from the property, right?
No, it would be expected that if another proposal came forward, a replacement conditional zoning agreement would be considered through the rezoning process.
And if the property changes hands, if the current owner had a buyer and they just purchased the property, the CZA attaches to that, right? It goes forward with that transaction?
Yeah, it's, it kind of transfers with the owner, so to speak, yeah.
Okay, so the starting point would be that's what's in place now. But I hear you saying it wouldn't be realistic at all to kind of just be like, okay, we'll wait for that, because it would probably not ever happen.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I think the owner would have a very difficult time even selling the property if the city's position was this is the only, you know, project that we'll accept.
And the, I'm just going to tie in a lot of things, so anybody like interrupt me if we have other thoughts or questions. But I'm just going to kind of go through my list here. So the, this right of first refusal question. So part of what I'm thinking about is the expectations of everyone at the time of 2019 versus now. And I think what I'm hearing my colleagues say, and what I totally understand, is wanting to meet expectations as best we can. At the same time, I think circumstances have changed to the point that we know we can't fulfill those expectations. The city's not getting what we bargained for out of this deal in terms of the affordable housing under this plan. And certainly, the tenants aren't getting what they bargained for in the form that they thought it would be. And so on the right of first refusal piece, the way that I understood it from the CZA was there were these modular homes, and there was multifamily, and that there would be an option, including a path to sort of a purchase on contract, like rent to own kind of option, that would be for a modular home or one of the units in the multifamily, or the relocation assistance. And so in my mind, if we're providing the relocation assistance, I don't feel comfortable kind of additionally layering that right of first refusal, because I think in the, what was contemplated at the time was that it would be kind of an either/or, not that you're getting the relocation assistance and the option to purchase. I think absolutely, hopefully, the negotiations that have happened to date and the conduct of the city staff in particular, regardless of who sits up here, has shown that the tenants would be listened to and would, you know, be able to come back and say, hey, you know, we want, as Sean said, a seat at the table in this conversation. But I don't, I don't think having something formalized in whatever we come up with makes a lot of sense to me. I have concerns with tying back to June 2019 residents if we're using ARPA funds. I'm not comfortable, you know, we got some correspondence on kind of how that might be justified. I'm not comfortable with saying that this pot of money that is pandemic relief should tie back to impacts on, you know, based on this residency of 2019. And I think I agree with the mayor that the September 1st of 2021 date makes sense. Where staff was coming from, if I understand correctly on that, was the trying to capture everyone who maybe had to move out last winter and make sure that they were included, because obviously, this has been a multi-year process. I see Jeff nodding your head.
Yeah, that's correct.
I appreciate the comments about maybe having different funding sources if we're going to have different timeframes, right? So maybe we would have ARPA funds that could be used for residents after a certain date or other funds before a certain date. I'm worried about our need to move with urgency. We all witnessed and participated in what occurred with the direct assistance program with the county. That was even lower stakes for the individuals who were receiving the funds. And I think, just in terms of the actual dollar amount to households. And I really fear that we could get caught up in a lot of back and forth and a lot more kind of negotiating by committee here. So I just want to plant that, like, that's something in my mind that I believe the parties have been negotiating in good faith up until this point. And I think we've kind of narrowed the issue, so I'm not really interested in like opening it back up, if that makes sense to folks. And so just kind of going along with that, I think the, I think the upfront money, where agreed on, that makes sense. I think the dollar amount, in my mind, ties to the eligibility, because we're talking about the total, well, it also ties to the funding source. But I think, you know, at the time, what was contemplated was a $7,200 cap plus moving expenses. And so if we're bringing in more than twice that, I think the expectation in my mind would be that maybe it is, you know, more to the people who have that, the more immediate acute need, rather than those who maybe were able to find some alternative a couple of years ago. I did read the memo from Eleanor Dilks that was referenced, the prior city attorney, and I didn't read that as a promise that individuals would receive the $7,200 payment. I read that as, at the time of implementation, the CZA, you know, the agreement stemming from that obligation in the CZA will need to be carried out. We don't want to lose track of people. I don't think it was making promises beyond that. So I didn't read it myself as that creating that sort of tieback obligation. So I think, yeah, I think the eligibility time period being certainly within the pandemic is important for the ARPA funds, because I believe that we're confident those relief dollars are not going to be taxable income to the recipients, correct?
The ARPA dollars, if we have to use another funding source, it's very likely that those could be taxable.
Right, so if we want to make sure it's not taxable income to the individuals, there's, I'm sure there's nuance, but we're confident that the ARPA funds would not be taxable.
Correct, there's clear guidance from the IRS on that.
Okay. So I guess I'm just kind of repeating myself, but I think where I'm at is I agree with a significant amount, like the intent of providing two years of stability, or, you know, that the relocation assistance being an amount to provide for two years of housing, I think is excellent and will really assist those people who were in a tremendously precarious housing situation. I think the upfront portion makes sense, I think the timeline makes sense. There was discussion about the income eligibility. My understanding from the memo was that tying eligibility to income and allowing a self-certification, which would be a simple sworn statement that your household is within this income, and not requiring additional proof, would be the simplest way to administer this. And I think I kind of heard the opposite of we want to simplify, so we don't want income eligibility. So I just want to kind of flesh that out among us if we can.
I guess the question would be, is it required through ARPA funds to have income eligibility associated?
It is, in our, in staff's belief, it is the simplest, most streamlined approach to implementing the relocation plan. There is a path forward to kind of declare this particular neighborhood as disproportionately impacted from COVID, but you have to have data to support that. And that's where we would have to go and collect information. We would have to do, I don't know what that looks like, to be honest. It could be surveys, it could be resident statements, it could be any number of different things. There's not clear guidance in the final rule about what exactly those steps are. It just says that you have to distinguish this neighborhood from all others and, you know, simply stating that, you know, there was loss of employment, there was educational interruptions, there was serious illness. I don't think general statements like that are going to satisfy the Treasury. We would probably have to get in touch with the Treasury and try to get more precise guidance, but our read on it right now is that we would have to get into a more intrusive data collection process. And the whole point behind the income certification is you self-certify, you prove your residency, and you're eligible, and we move forward.
Is there a higher limit? $40,000 for a household is still not a lot of money. I think we would all agree to that. Is there, I'm assuming that this, that number is something that we probably looked at?
Yeah, I think we can explore whether there's another avenue to push that, to push that figure up higher. I don't, I don't know the answer right now, but we can explore that.
A couple of thoughts I have on that would be, it sounded like there weren't very many of people, just numerically very many people who would fall under this category. I'd be interested to know how many there are. The second point would be, you know, in thinking about this, it seems that the residents of Forest View were hit by COVID in terms of their public health, their employment, and what I think is arguably perhaps unique to Forest View in that the project was impacted. So that is, to me, a pretty easy one to justify. I mean, it really suggests that the entire community, because everyone in that community was in some way or another tied to that project, would make it a relatively easy argument, because that is kind of a unique condition. And aside from all the more typical ways in which our community has been impacted by COVID, the other approach I would, I'm inclined to at least consider would be if it's, we're only talking about a few people, maybe, and we don't want to go through that data collection, we just find another funding source. You know, if it's not that many, I don't think the cost of including them would be that significant.
I think Counselor Thomas, I had a similar thought too with this project, having the developer state repeatedly that the reason that they couldn't move forward was because of COVID. So I think it is sort of a unique situation where we have at least, you know, everybody was depending on that person or, you know, a small group of people, but specifically that person. And they said, like, okay, well now we're scrubbing this because of COVID, which may have simplified things for us. I know it'd be a question for Treasury, right? So to me, in my mind, anyway. But I'd also like to sort of, the idea of, as we talk about the majority of the residents that we're trying to help in terms of like just numbers in a pool. And I was thinking too, kind of combining that with the idea of what's the start date. And I was looking back, two years ago today, Iowa was closing salons, barber shops, medical spas, massage therapists, all kinds of places, like it was like second or third round of closures. So we know that if we went back two years to March of 2020 instead of September of 2021, we'd still be very much within the COVID impact timeframe. Now, I would, going to guess, and I don't know, but I'm going to guess from the time of the CZA in 2019 to March of 2020, probably not a lot of people moved in that time period. I don't know, but that's something that might be worth finding out, because if we're talking about everybody that was there two years ago today, or roughly, two years ago this month, to now being covered, would seem eligible for ARPA funding. And if there was just a handful of people we had to cover with other funding from March of 2020 back to June of 2019, or whatever that date was, that might be a small enough pool that it's not going to, the big needle is from September possibly to March, September of '21 to March of 2020. And that's, you know, I think, and that would still seem within the whole, like, you know, since the pandemic started. So that seems a little easier to me, possibly.
I would definitely, just to piggyback on that, and I'm sorry, Pauline, I just cut you off. But it goes back to what Laura was talking about, and what I noted in the memo and had questioned about, is that even if it's that smaller group, and I think that that's a really interesting and potentially very smart way to look at it, to say, probably parsing it out, the residents who had to leave before COVID are relatively smaller than this larger group that would be affected and potentially covered by ARPA funds. I'd be interested in knowing exactly about that taxable income. Like, if we found it from a different source, what does that mean for potentially, say, let's just call it five families? What would that mean then? How would they be negatively impacted by the funds that, or is there a way that we could search out funds that would preclude them from having that money count as taxable income?
We can explore that, but I would say with pretty good certainty that any alternative funding source is going to be taxable. We'll certainly explore that and do our best, but it's the unique aspect of the ARPA disaster recovery funds that we're using that make it non-taxable. So local funds are surely going to be taxable, and then there's, you know, forms that have to be filled out and provided. I mean, it just gets to be a more intrusive process, but we would certainly look at that. And I also want to just clarify, we don't, I can't sit here with any certainty today and tell you you can use ARPA funds all the way back to March of 2020. I don't know that, the legislation was in March of '21. That is something that we would have to further explore and get back to you on. I think there may be an opportunity to move back with greater certainty to March of 2021. Going back to 2020, you might be in that alternative funding source realm.
Yeah, so my question is, was exactly how far back can we use ARPA funds?
Yeah.
Because that seems to me a really important point when we're looking at eligibility and funding sources. Using ARPA funds, particularly because it's non-taxable, is really by far the best option for everyone.
Yeah, staff would feel comfortable probably saying March of '21 is fairly certain. Anything beyond that will require some time.
What I might suggest is, you know, certainly this can be researched by staff, brought back to us. And as far as, you know, when, the date of eligibility, from my perspective, I can certainly be persuaded. The one thing that I will say is that even when we're thinking about March of 2020, that's two years ago, people have, you know, anyone that moved back then, they have moved. And so having the same level of, even if you did it proportioned by the months that moved, or even just a small percentage, it becomes a little complicated. And it's not that we can't get complicated. And it's not that we can't get complicated, because certainly these individuals have lived through complications. But I think that'd be a discussion that we'll have to have. The last thing I wanted to just mention, or ask, because the original agreement was with the property owner, or with the developer, the property owner of the 7,200 plus moving expenses. Is the city contemplating this, or is the city proposal based on land being dedicated to the city? Or does this have nothing to do with that?
The need for relocation is here regardless of whether we are able to negotiate that or not. I think we have to move forward with that being a separate issue.
Yep, I just wanted to make sure that we are clear on our position as counsel, what we're discussing. I also wanted to make mention that we are only about 15 minutes away from ending our session time. So wanted to just make that acknowledgement.
May I just make one more comment, and then we can move on, or what have you? I guess one of the things that, I was very struck by the thoroughness and the thoughtfulness of this memo with the history and everything else. But, you know, I absolutely agree that, I mean, the use of ARPA funds for this, I mean, it's a perfect use for what the tenants of Forest View are dealing with. But I think, I don't want us to get caught in thinking about the scope of the relocation needs. And again, I just want to go back to, the people who got us to this dance are the ones who are most impacted, right? They had to leave early, before this agreement happened, before they were able to get relocation funds. And in fact, that was something that was being built into that agreement, right? And so I feel like, at the same time, I just, I want to encourage us all to think as expansively as possible, as creatively is probably a better word for it, about how we might be able to get all of the tenants, the assistance that they need, and to honor that. And as is true, we do not have a legal obligation, but I really think we have an ethical imperative to do it as a city. And that's been really well stated by so many, all of the council members, and I think also from the hard work that the staff has gone into doing this as well. But I just wanted to put that out there. I don't want us to, at the same time, I think that ARPA funds, the more expansively we can do it, as is allowed, the better, to cover as many people as possible. But I don't want to feel like if, I don't want us to feel limited in only using ARPA funds.
I do think council has had a good starting discussion. This discussion will continue. We will move on in our agenda item. We're going to do clarification of agenda items, and then we're going to move to University of Iowa student government updates.
Mayor, could I, I'm so sorry to interrupt. Can we just have a plan for what our next step is on this item? Because I don't know if, unless staff has direction on where we're going, I just want to make sure we don't just let it sit, or make sure it's on our next agenda, or?
Yes.
Okay, so let me just kind of summarize what our takeaways are. Eligibility, I'm hearing a call to explore options to push the date back as far as possible. So if we go back to the CZA clarification on if ARPA funds can be used, what alternatives that may be, and we'll kind of look at three different dates. The CZA date, the March 20th date, I'm sorry, March of '20 date, and March of '21 dates. And we'll try to understand what the ARPA rules are with all three of those dates. I'll also contact the Residents Association and see if they can provide us a count of people from the time of the CZA to now with move-out dates within those ranges, so that you know, you know, how many may fall into each category. I hear concurrence on the amount of relocation, the 15-7 amount. I'm a little unclear what you want from us regarding the income requirement. We can certainly ask Treasury to see if they would give us more guidance on what declaring the class disproportionately impacted may be. December 9th, there doesn't seem to be any disagreement with that. And future housing, I'm sensing that, we'll just treat that separately. But there's an expectation that communication channels will remain open. Summarize everything okay?
It's a good start, yes.
So we can, we can try to come back at your next meeting. I really doubt we'll have answers to all these questions in two weeks.
Maybe be able to frame some of them at that point.
Well, we'll probably have an on-the-work session, depending on where staff is. Thank you all.
Just a quick comment, you'd mentioned, Jeff, something about the group, and we had gotten some information about that. Would you be able to follow up, maybe with the legal department, what that would entail? Or if that is a possibility, that they could just be encompassed as a group, having been affected by COVID?
Yeah. Yeah, the city attorney's office has been working with our staff closely. We'll continue to do that and see if we can get some clarification.
Great. All right, clarification of agenda items. This would be for the formal meeting. Hearing none, we're going to move on to USG with some updates. Hello?
Hi, Council, long time no see. So as you all have received, we got 11,000 copies of the magnets that we made. Super exciting, and we are working to distribute them right now. We brought some to y'all, as well as they are currently in a few IMU offices, such as Student Legal Services and the Food Pantry, as well as outside of the Student Activities and USG's office. So we're also working with the city to distribute them to local businesses, as well as bars, and just other places where students might be able to get them. And another point, thanks to the work of our Health and Safety Director, all the Diva cups that were stocked at the Food Pantry have been taken, and they plan to restock that as well. There, our Health and Safety, Mental Equity work continues, especially going on into Pride Week, happening this week. Information on Pride Week events is on the university website, which I will include linked in our announcements. On the subject of Pride Week, the Queer Trans Closet is happening March 24th through the 27th in the IMU Room 351, which is a chance for students in free gender, to find free gender-affirming clothing. Anna and I will be volunteering on the first day of our séance from 6:00 to 10:00, so feel free to stop by and say hi. April 5th, so at the next city council meeting, I will be out of town for the big Association of Big Ten Conference, happening in Washington, DC. But Anna will be here to come at the beginning of council to give announcements. That might mean, like, having to move up announcements or something, I'm not totally sure. I would talk to them. The move-in checklist created by USG's GR Committee has passed the Iowa House this past week, and is now moving on to the Senate. Battery fires have decreased in Iowa City, or decreased due to the success of the Iowa City's recycling program. And that has included with more battery drop-off locations. So a little round of applause for that, that's pretty cool. And finally, USG is sponsoring an event with Judy Hume, an internationally renowned disabilities rights activist, as well as with former Senator Tom Harkin, who will be, they will be speaking at the Hancher Auditorium on next Wednesday, the 30th. And seems like a super cool event, I would encourage you all to go. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, sound like lots happening, and welcome back to all the students that left for spring break. We enjoyed Rockstar Parking. All right, we're going to do just one item before we end, and we'll pick this, we'll pick up the work session after our formal meeting. But we're going to go to March 17th IP1. It's a memo from our city clerk, and it's really just talking about moving back to council chambers, Emma Harvitt Hall, and just wanted to open up that discussion. Numbers are down, the city, we have the hybrid options for meetings, which is great. And just wanted to open up that conversation to see what people's thoughts are. Are people comfortable moving back?
Yes. I mean, I think it's time, and I think that we have used the hospitality of the senior center for a very long time, and I'm very appreciative, very grateful to Latasha and everyone else for allowing us to occupy this space, but I do think it's time.
Yes, yes.
Are we comfortable next meeting starting in April?
If I may, Your Honor, the one thing I would add about that is there are a number of items being set on your agenda tonight that are setting a public hearing for the next meeting here. So if you'd be willing to do it two weeks from now, I'm sorry, two meetings from now, which would be April 19th, that would be appreciated.
So considering for April 19th. All right, April 19th, great. We are going to adjourn for now, and we will be back at 6:00 PM. We are adjourned back to our work session. And the remaining items there is going to be our information packets. We have three, so I'll start with March 3rd.
So I had a question on IP2 for March 3rd. The memo from the Planning and Zoning Commission about the House study bill and the Senate study bill, that they were concerned could really override our zoning. Is that a bill that's, are those bills actually moving forward, or have they died?
Yeah, I'm going to look to Rachel and see if she can provide an update on that. I think you were corresponding on that one recently.
So there's been an amendment filed on Division 10, which addresses the building code, which doesn't touch the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing codes, but still would create a statewide building code, prohibit local amendments, and make it a legisla, a process, a code that's adopted legislatively rather than how it is administratively right now. There was also talk about stripping out that zoning language out of Division 1, which was pretty vague and broad. We haven't seen an amendment that's done that yet, but it sounds like that's a done deal.
Thanks. I'm glad you brought that up, Counselor Weiner, because I, when I saw that, and I thought there was some mention in there about our planning and zoning codes, and I thought, you know, this is some type of legislation that we really need to keep on top of. It'd be imperative that we make sure that our lobbyists keep us posted on any things like this.
Yeah, I think it is definitely, it's about, there's actually a couple of things in that overarching bill. The zoning is a huge one. The building code, I think, is something that's, has all kinds of ramifications that we need to really be pushing back against. Not only can that set us back in terms of our own climate, addressing climate change, because I think the states, the state code is like still like 10 years behind where Iowa City is, something like that. It's that ballpark, something like that, which would also hurt our ability, efficiency of our homes for things like energy, and energy bills and things. You know, if we're not enforcing a more up-to-date environmental code, you know, we're looking at all kinds of long-term ramifications with that. And so that is something, too, I've also been sort of in touch with some of our delegation about, and kind of voicing my concerns and worries. It seems like, you know, at least our Iowa City folks are aware of that and keeping an eye on it, hopefully trying to do what they can to oppose or strip out some of the worst parts of that bill, so.
We should, I haven't taken a look, but we should take a look online and see who has actually registered us for the bill.
I think the last time I looked, a lot of the cities were undecided yet on this bill, but the information's about a week old, so I haven't looked since I've gotten back from traveling. Yeah, that is a good thing to look at, see who's come out for and against, or undecided. I don't know, maybe that's changed.
All right. We have nothing more from March 3rd, we're going to go to March 10th.
IP4, the Civil Service Announcement of Appointments to Positions of Community Outreach, Assistant Immigration and Refugee Communities. I want to welcome those individuals that were appointed, and I'm happy to see this, and hope it can be a benefit to those in our community who are immigrants and refugees.
Moving on to March 17th.
I appreciated the article that, John, you included about the, Where We've Been Living All This Time, I think it was called, so I think that's a helpful frame for some of the discussions we had earlier, and that we will have in our strategic planning.
Yeah, that video was probably the most concise video I've seen on this topic, which was, you know, the topic itself was included in our strategic plan from two years ago. So we'll see what happens at our next strategic plan meeting.
Yeah, if you haven't seen the video, I commend it to you as well.
IP7, I wanted to point out and highlight an item Elizabeth mentioned in our USG report about an evening with Judy Hume, who is an internationally renowned disability rights advocate. It's March 30th, 7:30 at Hancher. And along with that on March 29th is the actual screening of the KIP Camp Documentary, which is 6:30 at Film Scene at Chauncey. It's said to be a very inspiring documentary about a summer camp that was developed for teens with disabilities, and a group of those young people then went on to join the Disability Rights Advocate Group and advocating for legislative changes for disabled people. So I hope that everyone can get a chance to go to one or both of those events.
The Hancher event is free of charge, you just have to sign up.
Is what?
It's free of charge, you just have to sign up.
Nice. I wanted to, IP4 is our pending work session. And I wondered if council would be interested in bringing in the Guided Link. We haven't, before the year is out. But bringing in the Guided Link just to get kind of a update since they've been operational. We haven't had them here, and I think since before they actually started receiving individuals.
That'd be very interesting.
So we'll add that to the work session, pending.
Happy to do that. I might suggest you consider that for a joint meeting topic. It seems to be that would be a great setting.
It'd be good for the joint entities.
Yeah, and that'd be coming up. So, yeah, I think that, I would agree, that'd be a better space.
We'll pencil that in, of course, you can add to that list when that time comes, but I think that'd be a good setting for that.
And I've mentioned it in conversation with you, Mayor, and with a couple others, but certainly as I sat out there while staff presented the collation of all the community feedback, and then sort of the categorization of how that all would work for the ARPA funds. And it's been a while since I presented it. I know that we're coming up on strategic planning. I also know that we're looking forward to sort of how are we going to disperse the rest of the monies? And so I would love it if staff could present that again, now that John and I are both on council, and just as a refresher, so that then we can kind of, and I'm taking a page from John's book about sort of having a better holistic view, about sort of the relationship between how we're putting money toward, and the ARPA funds, towards what our strategic planning is, so that we're not redoubling or being redundant, but also we're being really mindful about how we can sort of best serve the community, both in the short term and longer term. So that's my request, I guess, is if we can get that, a refresher on what staff had to say from the community about ARPA funds, and how they should be put. Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
Great, so we'll put that on there as well. Anything else for March 17th? All right, I'll just open, yes?
I just, I was looking up that, jumping back one topic, if that's okay, I don't want to. The bill passed out of committee with, it looks like from my quick read, passed out of committee. of committee today, so it's still alive. It looks like a lot of the problematic language is still in there. And I'm looking at, looking for Iowa City. Some cities have come out against this bill. It looks like Coralville has. I haven't found Iowa cities yet, like what our, what our lobbyist has done out there. But anyway, so that bill is still alive and kicking, and so I don't know if that's something that we want to maybe discuss, giving some sort of indication. Some cities are still undecided, Cedar Rapids is still undecided, some different, yeah, so I mean, it's, reading through the list. If we want to give some direction or maybe have a conversation about what we want to do in terms of having our lobbyists take a stand on that bill. And I note that some conversation that we had had, Jeff, if you want to kind of chime in a bit there.
Yeah, so understand, just, just because a group, including the city, may be undecided, that doesn't mean that we're not actively voicing concerns. Our, our concerns are heard on this item. We've shared those with our delegation, and our lobbyist has been able to communicate that with, with the appropriate people at the legislature. We've kind of learned that, you know, the, the timing of declaring a position is, is a bit of a science. Oftentimes, if you take your position too soon, you might be left out of the conversations in order to how to shape legislation going forward. So oftentimes, you won't see us register, in a lot of cities, you won't see register, until we feel like the negotiations on the bill are over and it's going to move forward, you know, from that point. In this case, we still think that there's a lot of fluidity in, in the discussions, that the, that there's still a lot of talk about stripping the zoning piece out. The building piece is still being heavily scrutinized, and the advice that we get from our lobbyist is just stay undecided. It, it allows them to engage a little bit more effectively from their perspective. And then if the time comes where the writing's on the wall and this thing's gonna be pushed forward for a vote, that's when we would, would make a move to declare our position. That said, if you want to, you know, make it known right now what you think about this, you can always direct us to register as opposed, and you can change your registration as, as it evolves, too. But we try to take our cues from, from the lobby team on, on what the right timing is on a particular bill.
Thank you. Anything else from any other info packets? All right, I will give one last opportunity because it is on our work session agenda for any council updates on assigned boards, commissions, and committees. Hearing none. We are adjourned, and good evening. Thanks for coming in at 3:00 PM.